Whereas 552 Ohio children will be diagnosed with cancer in 2025, 58 children lose their lives to cancer. And whereas childhood cancer is the number one disease, related killer of kids in the U.S., one in five children are terminal at diagnosis. Three in five suffer life-altering impacts of treatment that significantly alter their quality of life. One in 285 children will be diagnosed with cancer before the age of 20. Whereas childhood cancer is on the rise, childhood cancer and adult cancers are different, yet we continue to use inappropriate adult cancer protocols on kids with many times devastating effects. The lack of childhood cancer research has tremendously impacted kids and significant costs to society now and in the future. Whereas despite these facts, childhood cancer research is vastly and consistently underfunded. In 25 years, the FDA has initially approved only two drugs for any childhood cancer. And half of all chemotherapy used for children's cancers are over 25 years old. And whereas the causes of the most childhood cancers are unknown at the present, childhood cancer cannot be prevented. And families who are or have been in treatment work tirelessly to change these alarming statistics. Whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the Friends of Faith Prudent Foundation of Central Ohio, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. Now therefore, I Bill Collins, Mayor of the City of Marion, do hereby proclaim the month of September of 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And the City of Marion encourage our residents to support this cause, which so deeply impacts families in every community across the country, including the City of Marion. And it's up to Thaddeus, but Thaddeus might want to say why he's up here and why he's accepting of this proclamation.
Yes, certainly. So when I was younger, my younger brother in my family, we were impacted with childhood cancer and my mother and had to deal with all kinds of stress and all kinds of crazy stuff that comes along with that. And the nonprofits and organizations that are able to help out these families, they're next to the miracle workers, you know? So I don't know how we got through it, but my mom always made it happen. But my brother, he's lucky to even be walking. So Columbus Children's Hospital, they're the ones that we have to thank besides God.
Proud of you, Thad.
Also, you'll have a summary, summaries of proceedings. Mr. Dickel?
Madam President, at the last meeting, I was concerned about some of the changes or some of the mistakes in the minutes. I handed a clerk the packet. I've highlighted all of them. In the first four, 714, 728, 811, and 825, none of the changes changed the substance at all or any of the votes or anything like that. They're just misspellings and stuff like that. However, in the last one, 908, I just want to point out a few, there was a cut-and-paste error and my name was left off the roll call on page one. And the line about Mr. Neff resigning doesn't need to be in there. That was in the last meeting. There's just a couple of misspellings. On page three, my name is missing from the nay vote. So that would be up there, so I'm not listed as voting when I did. So that should be there. There is a, excuse me here. Page two, at the bottom, there's a Finance Committee vote. The vote is registered as 201, which should be, I believe, two to one.
No, I looked at that.
No, Mr. Ratliff abstaining.
Okay, but aren't there only three people on the committee?
Yes. There was two for, none against, one abstention.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's my misunderstanding. Thank you. And that would be, that would be it. So again, I don't think, I don't know that it changes the substance of anything, but my name is missing, but I would just note that on the record is being corrected. So as a hammies to the clerk, if anybody has no objections, I would make a motion to accept these minutes as corrected with these changes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the summary of proceedings as corrected. Are you ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teasman?
Yes.
Mr. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Harris, you may ask. So the summary is finished. All business. Item one, ordinance 2025-092.
Ordinance making additional appropriations within the general fund of the law director's office professional services line item.
Ms. Lang, come to the Finance Committee.
This came from Finance Committee with a 2-0, no recommendation. Basically, it's to pay for professional services that have been rendered. If anybody has any questions tonight, it's the third read on this. I believe Director, Law Director Russell can answer any questions anyone may have.
Yes, so I am going to abstain from the actual vote because I have a pending lawsuit against the law firm. However, I do have some questions because although I'm not going to vote on it, I do want to, I do have a vested interest in making sure that everything is correct. I had requested from the law director the invoices from Isaac Wiles. And to be completely honest, I'm not sure what the total amount is that we spent with them. It does show that we have a bill that we paid in the amount of $7,154.70. And then there are two invoices, one that shows a balance due of $13,574, and one shows a total balance due of $17,094.77. And so I, my first question on the bill is, what is the total bill?
Madam President, in response to Mr. Ratliff's question, the $17,000 invoice should be disregarded because those, the payment that was made to Isaac Wiles, and that invoice crossed, and so the relevant one is the $13,000 document?
Okay, so, so the $13,574 is what's owed, and we have paid $7,154?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to point out, that's almost $21,000 for a case that was won in summary judgment. That you never had to go to court, you never had to really, you know, do anything but a motion for summary judgment. And I just, it's, that is very expensive. And then as you look through, in their itemized billing, they will have things like draft a notice of appearance. And, you know, from personal experience, I've drafted multiple notice of appearance, and I always bill .1. Our bill is .4. And, you know, I don't know what would take somebody nearly a half an hour to type two or three sentences. I noticed on their billing that they were, we were told that they were experts in this field. However, we're paying hours of research. And, you know, I would assume if you are hiring an attorney that is an expert in a field, you wouldn't have to pay for hours and hours of research. And then, I probably won't be able to find it off the top of my head, but we paid, we are paying for them to draft a memorandum in opposition to a plaintiff's motion for summary judgment. And the very next billing, we are paying to draft a memorandum in opposition to a defendant's motion for summary judgment. And so one of those are ours. And so our itemized bill shows that we are paying a place to oppose the very motion that we filed. And, you know, I just, you know, again, you know very well what I think of this law firm as far as one of their partners in particular. And, I mean, it looks to me like the whole law firm may fit the bill with him. And, you know, again, I am, I can't vote on it, but I think everybody should know that you're paying an exorbitant bill that doesn't even make any sense.
Ms. Craig?
May I ask Mr. Ratliff a question?
Yes, sir.
Is that all one case that you're talking about, or is that the multiple cases that we have going on with Isaac Wiles as our representation right now?
So I think we have only retained them on one case. This is one case. I believe the other case or cases involving the city, the insurance company for the city has retained them. So we are not paying the freight except for this one case, as far as my understanding.
Okay, but theoretically, the insurance premiums are going to bill up when Isaac Wiles keeps billing like that. Isaac Wiles was retained to, my, my lawsuit with the city, Isaac Wiles was retained to fight me. And a federal judge had basically told them to have it wrapped up by the end of October. My attorney had a hearing with the judge, and Isaac Wiles, the 16th, Monday or Tuesday, I can't see the calendar from here, glasses are on. And Isaac Wiles is now asked for another month. So my attorney has worked with them, he's been an attorney for 40 years. He's worked with them, never lost to them, by the way. He's worked with, against them, I guess I should say, with or against them for years. He said they're lazy and slow, and that they like to milk their customers. So I really think it's something that, as a city, we should consider and take a look at these bills, because even if the insurance company is paying for it, in theory, we're going to go back around and pay higher premiums because of the legal fees that we're eating, because of the lawsuits that we're asking.
Any other comments or questions from counsel or the public? Mr. Schaubert?
If I can ask the law director, do you feel that the billable hours are out of the norm, and should we request a bill, invoice correction?
So in regards to the defendant and plaintiff Mr. Ratliff mentioned, we may want to look into that a little more deeper to see if truly it was an hour spent on this case. That's no problem. But in regards to the billing statements that we've received, they are consistent with what I would expect. And when we first discussed retaining a firm with an expertise in ADA and discrimination, I was asked if I had a ballpark of what I would expect to pay. And my response was 20 to 30. This is at the low end. Mr. Ratliff indicated that it did not go to trial, which is true. Obviously, the city hopes to win every case that it has in court upon its summary judgment. There was significant amount of time that went into preparing for summary judgment, including depositions, which I did attend. So it is consistent with what I would expect. And in my review, I didn't see anything that I questioned. I would be willing to examine more closely the page where there was a defendant, plaintiff reference made by Mr. Ratliff.
If I could follow up with that, so would, if we just pass this tonight, give you the funds, or should we wait another council cycle, give you that opportunity to research that, and then come back for a final vote?
So the reference to the transposing of plaintiff and defendant as far as the reference is a very, very small item. I would ask counsel to pass this on the third reading this evening. And I will make this assurance to you, I will look into the plaintiff and defendant's being transposed and ensure that it's accurate before any payments go out.
So you think that they just accidentally typed the wrong thing?
That's what I would have assumed, but we never work off of assumptions. I will follow up and ensure that they have billed us for time spent on this case, in which we were successful in the commonplace court in stopping Lighthouse from operating houses in R1A districts, which was very important to the City of Marion.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any other questions or comments? Oh, sorry, Mr. Rollins.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Rollins and a second from Mr. R. Smith.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Abstain.
Mr. Schaubert?
No.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teasman?
Yes.
Mr. Brainerd?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
62.
Abstention.
We have two no's.
Right, 621.
Oh, I thought you said, never mind. I didn't hear it correctly. Thank you.
Sorry.
Motion carries. 621.
Ordinance vacating part of the 16.5-foot public alley lying south of lot 1695 and north of lot 1696 in the Park Edition situated in the City of Marion, flat book two, page 60, and retaining permanent easement rights.
Mr. Barr? I'm looking from your committee.
Yep, come out of that. Streets and Service with a 3-0 recommendation approved. It's the second reading, public hearing scheduled for 10:13. Happy to answer any questions.
All right.
Second reading.
Second reading, thank you. And that will be it, our next council case. Item number three, ordinance 2025-097.
Ordinance making a zoning map of the City of Marion by rezoning 144 Waterloo from a R1C, single-family, high district density to an R2 general dwelling district.
Excuse me, Mr. Brainerd?
Yes.
This comes out of zoning and annexation committee with 2-0 recommendation to approve
at 144 Waterloo. And this is changing the zoning to allow for the single family. This is going to, it's going to be a duplex in this place. And it's been set up and agreed to, eight, I think it was 8-0 by the City Planning Commission. And this here is the second reading. There's going to be a third reading, a public hearing on 10:13, our next city council meeting. Any questions?
Oh, I just knew this was the second reading.
Agreed, second ten, second reading.
All right, thank you. New business, item number four, ordinance 2025-098.
Ordinance designating depositories of public monies of the City of Marion and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Lang?
This comes out of Finance Committee with a 3-0, no recommendation. This is, I mean, this was presented to council earlier. There were some changes that needed to be made. It went back to committee. The changes were made, the applications were received by the banks that are noted for active accounts and for interim accounts. If there's no further questions, I can keep this as a sec, first read tonight or move it on. Mr. Reese is here to answer any questions.
Yeah, let's start with counsel first, Mr. Schaubert and Mr. R. Smith, and then we'll get to you, Ms. Fisher.
Yeah, I'm just curious what emphasis added means. Are we yelling at somebody?
What? What?
That's how we got it.
I mean, the text prior to that is bold, underlined, so maybe we are yelling at someone?
No intent to yell, but others have noted, this is rather lengthy as far as an ordinance goes, because it has a lot of content in it. It kind of explains things for those that have been following for quite some time as far as the difference between active monies and interim monies. And so you'll note on the first page when it was drafted, I, this time around, bolded it, underlined active monies. And in section two, I bolded and underlined interim funds, just to draw attention to that. And then the reference you're making in regards to section three just emphasizes the duty of the office holder to provide a report to the Treasury Investment Board. The Treasury Investment Board's role is once it's advised by the treasurer and auditor that there are funds that aren't needed for the next six months, Treasury Investment Board meets and determines how best to invest those funds to get the most return. So that report is very important. That's why it's bolded and underlined.
So emphasis added is necessary, is what you're saying?
I see it every day, pleadings and items that I read. If you want to remove it, it's not going to have any significance.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. R. Smith, you are next.
Yes, I hate to beat on this thing again, but in the agenda, it's listed as 2025-098, but on the ordinance itself, it's dash 000.
I was going to ask the same question, I thought I was, I'm just, I was thinking, is that correct?
No, I haven't updated it. When it originally came to me and went to Finance Committee, it was Finance 54. I did not get the, I was running late from the last, when preparing the ordinances for the agenda, I was at a conference on Thursday, so this all got put together Friday for publication. So yes, this is 89.
89 or 98?
98. Because you'll notice at the bottom of the next ordinance, it says Finance 57, and it should be Finance, or Ordinance 99. They are updated online at this point, but the printed copies, I did not have a chance to get corrected.
Ms. Fisher?
May I ask once again, the list of depositories, banks that we're using?
Ms. Lang?
The Faye Banking Company, Union Bank, Premier Bank, Park National Bank, First Citizens National, and Fitzroy.
May I ask why Premier Bank has been used?
Why are they being, drawn the list because we will use them if we have to?
May I ask why they're not, are they located in Marion?
Yes.
Are they?
Yes.
May I ask?
The name is West Bank, but they still go under the name of Premier.
Yes, which bank, I'm sorry? What's the name?
It's called West Bank.
West Bank.
But they still go under the name of Premier.
May I ask where they're located?
I don't know. Let it cross them.
My point is, if they don't do business in Marion, I don't think that we should do business with them. If, if I didn't know West Bank existed in Marion, I'm sorry.
Well, when I went to them, I said, well, I thought it said Premier. He said, we're still under the name of Premier. You know, it's called West Bank.
Okay. I'm still going to say, what I have to say is, if, if they don't do business in Marion, I don't think we should do business with them. We should support the depositories that are in Marion. And if we don't know where Premier Bank is...
James, sir. Yeah, James Wade, that was, I couldn't think of it. James Wade.
Okay. So it shouldn't be listed as Premier?
The bank president told me they still go under the name of Premier. I only can go by what they tell me. And then the application that they were sent is also Premier.
And may I ask, do we do business? Do we have deposits in?
Not, not at this time.
Okay.
We did have CDs with them, I'm going to say that.
Okay. I just want to point out that I strongly feel that we should do business with the institutions that are located within Marion County. I just want to make that perfectly clear. I think that is very important. If we're going to support this community, we need to support it all the way.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, what else? Ms. Ratliff?
Okay, so I really thought, coming out of committee, that this was good and ready this time. And then hearing the exchange there, I now question it, because if I heard right, we do not have money at Premier.
Not at this time, no.
So if, if this is passed, and depository of active monies says 10% at Premier, so it says up to. So if we don't have any money there, then if you add the other percentages up, we're only at 90%. So I guess I question the percentages and their accuracy if they don't equal 100, because they should always equal 100. And if you have 10% that isn't there, where is it?
I think you're figuring wrong. That's not how it works.
Okay, so on page one, it says the Faye Banking Company, 35%.
Correct.
Union Bank, 15%. Premier Bank, 10%. Park National Bank, 10%. First Citizens National, 30%. And if you add those up, that equals 100%.
Correct.
So 100% of our money is split between those banks. If we don't have any money at Premier Bank, then if you add the other ones up, you're only at 90%.
Here's how it works, let me just say it.
Okay.
Say we have, okay, say we have $100. Say we only have $100. Well, only 35% can be in Faye Bank.
Correct.
At the most. Then out of the $100, you could have 10%, which would be $10. So that's how it works, in other words.
Yeah, but it's still got to equal 100%. So, so going with that, if you have $100, and you put 35 in Faye Bank, 15 in Union Bank, 10 in Park National, and 30 in First Citizens, if we don't have any in Premier, we still have $10. And if I'm not getting it, just help me understand, because it...
Mr. Brainerd?
Yeah, so there's no money in Premier Bank right now.
Correct.
Are we going to put money in Premier Bank?
It all depends, it all depends what the interest rates are and stuff. We can spend.
So there's no guarantee we're going to put it in there. So what would we do with that other 10% or $10 if those interest rates were like 1.5%? What would we do then? I mean, but with, there's 10, there's 10% $10.
Well, in other words, like Faye Bank, say $100, we may not have 35% in Faye Bank. Now you with me? It could, in other, the most we could put in Faye Bank is $35.
Okay.
But it could be only $40 in there. I mean, $20. So it won't never add up to maybe 100% normally, according to how much money is valued.
So these are the maximums?
Yeah.
These are just the maximums that you're going to put in?
Yeah.
So it's not necessarily so that you're going to put?
Yeah, I would like that, correct.
But if you only have $100, and you only put 40, I mean 20 in Faye Bank, to put the rest of the $100 in, you're going to go over the percentages on the banks that are left, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
If little Timmy had 10 apples--
And he liked sugar.
Right.
Other questions or comments? Yes.
On the annual 608 Cater Street. My question is, why do we have 35% with Fahey Bank and the rest of them are like they are? I'm going, where's between six banks?
Because that's where our payroll would be in general fund, which would have a lot more money than the other bank.
But you are aware that the city of Marion does not fall under the FDIC like per se that Fahey Bank were to suddenly go belly up? I mean, I grant you that they would try to sell the assets, of course, but the city of Marion, I mean, even if you were a person, would only get 250,000, you're talking about 35% of how much? I mean, $20 million maybe? And you're talking about $7 million in one bank that we could lose, that the city of Marion could lose. So we had this little problem when I had-- Go ahead.
We're only talking about active money, so the stuff that's needed from a day-to-day operational pay the bills, pay the payroll type of scenario.
Okay, so--
So the other funds would fall into this-- oh, I can't believe we're doing this again. But yeah. So this just refers to active monies, so the money that's needed from a day-to-day in the very near future, very near term.
Which, what does that usually fall into? How much? I mean--
I would, I mean, if I'm going to guess, it'd be somewhere in the 200 to $600,000 range. I don't, you have to ask.
Ms. Lang?
Specifically, I don't get involved in the day-to-day.
Government funds are not guaranteed by FDIC. The bank has to back those up with actual cash.
Yeah, see, that was another issue because we used to have--
If the bank goes belly up, there's actual cash that comes back to government. So they have to have the deposit on hand that would cover all our funds. We're not maxed out at 250. The bank has to guarantee that our funds are protected.
Okay, but--
So if Fahey goes up, then we get it all.
Okay. But Union Bank, before it was Union Bank, it used to be the Ohio State Bank. And they always ran into issues that, that got them danged by the FDIC because they wouldn't hold, you're supposed to hold 5% liquid on a daily basis as if they're paying your deposits. And they constantly failed to load that 5%. But yet, so there was a danger, at least at that point in time. It was actually a notice that went out that stated that the city of Marion should consider pulling their, pulling their funds from the Ohio State Bank because at that time, they had about, roughly, it's about 10%. Now, of course, Union Bank, they'll get a man who's a billion-dollar bank out of Columbus Grove, Ohio. But they set up here mainly so that they could sit there and run banking down in Columbus like the Ohio State Bank used to do. I don't think they ever really did business here in Marion at all. I think they, most of their, most of theirs was down there in, was down there in Columbus. And I think that's what her issue was, like, because if you've got a bank here that's doing business primarily in Columbus and they're not doing hardly any here, then why should we deal with them all?
Well, if you were talking about hometown banks, then there's only one, Fahey. Okay? Everybody else is based somewhere else. So if you're talking about you want to put all your money in just the hometown bank, the only place you have is state. As far as what went on with Ohio State Bank, I don't know.
No, they eventually sold out too, but Union, they picked it up after 2014. So I know all of that, so, but that was their original idea. It used to be the old Marion Bank, the old Marion City Bank. And boy, that was fun, too. I found a little bit about them, too. But they sold out to Ohio State Bank, and then they went on and eventually sold out to Union Bank. Union Bank's been doing fairly good the last 10 years or so.
Okay, well, we're going to need to move on.
Talking about the funds or deposits, you had asked if they were protected, and they are, by state law.
Okay.
Ms. Lang, just a question or comment?
I have a question. Do we have to have five banks? Or can we have four?
Mr. Reese?
Oh, no, I will be answering the last question. I had a brain freeze, so I'm not, my mind's been a lot of places today. Oh, what, the $100, say we have, our total that we have is $100. In other words, 10% of that $100 can go into whatever the other 10% is, and 15% of the 100 can go on those banks. That's where it is. Whatever our value is, that's, that's the percentage that can be put in any of those banks. That's what--
Okay. Ms. Lang?
I'm going to ask my question again. We have five banks listed on here. Do we have to deposit our money in five banks, or can we have four banks that we deposit our funds in?
We can deposit in two banks if we want, but that's not a great idea.
So we could theoretically scratch Premier Bank and make--
No, I would want to scratch--
Can I finish, please? Thank you. We could scratch Premier Bank and make Union Bank 20% and Park National 15% if we wanted to then. And that would equal 100%.
No.
If we're not going to use Premier Bank, why do we have it on here?
Well, we're not using National Bank, we're not using Park National Bank at this time either.
This gets worse.
I made the motion to send this back to committee.
I'll second it.
No, hold it. Let me say something. The $100 say is a $100. In other words, the 35% of the $100 can go into Fahey Bank, then 10%. In other words, if 10% could be of that 100 also, I know what our value is.
So our question is--
I'm just trying to use a small number to give you a better idea.
Okay, but the question is, this, this ordinance is to split the city's funds amongst all these banks. So where, if our money is not at First Citizen, or if it's not at Park National, and it's not at Premier, then all of our money is at what bank? Fahey, Union, First Citizens? Is it split between the three banks?
At this time.
So what percentage of our active funds right now are currently--
You're going to really throw them off because that's 33.333 to the infinity.
You're not going to throw me off.
I don't even know how long this has been going on, but at one point, didn't you discuss that there had to be five banks? There had to be, I know that there had to be the applications, and that was a real sticking point, but I thought at one point in time, I don't know if it's ORC, if it's city ordinance or whatever, but I thought, I remember that there needed to be at least five depositories.
I believe they had five listed, but they only had applications from four, so that's why they were looking for the fifth, if I, if, from when I was sitting out there.
I remember that part, too. It seems like there had to be five, or that was the hangup because there wasn't the applications. And so like, if we only needed four, then we would only, we already had the four applications, but because we didn't have the fifth one, we didn't vote on it. This is, like I said, but that's the, seemed to be that, that was what the holdup was, is that there wasn't the application for the fifth one, and now there's a sixth one. And do we even have any money to put in any of them?
I believe the ordinance should read something like, the depository of active monies percent should be deposited to no more than, and increase these amounts so you could have 100% at less than other ones.
You could distribute them.
Yeah, you could distribute them. You could have no more than 25% at all the banks, and then--
That's rewriting that ordinance again, which I understand if you have--
Well, it looks like it's going back there anyway.
We should probably check if we need the five depositories, or I understand what you're saying, like, maybe it's simple, you want to have all the depositories, but I swear at one point in time, it was said that we--
I was under the understanding we had to have five banks.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But now I'm asking the question.
Oh, I get it.
Do we?
Right. I thought we did. And now we're up to six. Maybe we need to, like, check on that before we vote on the ordinance that ends.
Mr. Schaubert?
It's not my job to be the treasurer, and so I'm asking--
All of us seem pretty lost on this one now.
Mr. Schaubert, did you want to make a comment or ask a question?
I am glad that this will go back to committee. I hope all council members vote to send it back to committee, and I hope every council member educates themselves on the financial processes within the city, because out of the nine, I don't think 10 of us have a clue what's going on, based on the questions asked You cannot, it would be impossible to take a snapshot and then try to make it match 100% every day. That's impossible.
Because if I had a chalkboard, I could show you what I mean. I'd even explain it right.
So please, all council members educate yourself because the amount of ignorance, and I don't mean that negatively, we just don't know. You need, we need to educate ourselves. This, this, this has tried to go through council for two years now.
I'm just making an observation. So, and section one, toward the bottom, it says that on, on the basis of operating into this city, the first $25,000 of such monies, subject to the control of this city, shall in accordance with section 13504 of the Higher Rights Code, be deposited in the Fahey Banking Company. And that active monies of this city in excess of such sum of $25,000 shall be deposited in such institutions in proportion to their respective award quotas as determined pursuant to section 13504. Said institutions and the amount of deposits in each are as follows. So it tells us B, the first $25,000 goes to Fahey Bank, and the rest of it gets split out equally by the percentage listed in this ordinance. I'm not, yeah. So if we don't have money at Union Bank, I'm not sure we're following our ordinance.
I agree.
So I think it is probably good to go back to committee and so everybody understands where we should be.
Thank you, sir.
Was there a motion on the floor to send that back?
Yes.
I just want to add one quick thing. When you Google Premier Bank, there's a turn in quotes. So it says they are becoming West Bank Co., but as of right now, they're closed. So I just wanted you guys to know that.
Dan, Part 252 Homer. It is West Bank Co. now. It's right up next to my letter in there, so I know where it probably is out there. So the sign out there, it's West Bank Co., it is open for business. So that is an operating business that is no longer permanent. Right down on the corner of James Way and that street that goes back to--
The Red Cross.
Yeah.
Back towards the Red Cross.
Right. So that is an open bank, and it is, they have the West Bank Co. sign up.
So the ordinance would have to be changed to reflect that name, I would think.
No, I wouldn't do it. That's what I said to the president, Mr. Hensel, right, the president there. I said, wait a minute. He said, no, we're still under the name of Premier though, and that's on the applications also.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor from Ms. Lang to send this back to committee, and Mr. Arseneff, you have to second?
Mr. Ratliff will second.
I'm sorry. I can--
Which I like, that it's from the Finance Committee at first and the second.
Sorry, Mr. Smith. Miss, Mr. Ratliff, thank you. All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teasman?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. Arseneff?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously to send this back to Finance Committee. Next, excuse me, item number five, ordinance 2025-099.
Ordinance appropriating funds donated to the city of Marion to support the strongest town celebration for the year ending December 31, 2025.
Ms. Lang, finance again.
This came to Finance Committee with a 3-0 recommendation to approve. I do believe this is the last of the donations that the city has received from private donors, and so we just need to appropriate those funds into the account. And Ms. Torino, if you could also, do you have any idea what the balance is to date? Have we paid everything on that?
We haven't paid everything. There were still two statements that we hadn't received yet. That should be coming in any day now from them being a month behind. And then once we pay those, there should be about $2,900-ish left over. And then that was what we had said would be up for discussion, how that should be.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Let's do, I saw Mr. Smith, Teasman, and first, and the second. Any ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teasman?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. Arseneff?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously to suspend three readings rule. Mr. Rollins?
Motion to approve.
And Mr. Rollins has the motion to approve, and I saw again the second from Mr. Teasman first. Any other discussion or questions?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teasman?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. Arseneff?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously to suspend three readings rule. Mr. Rollins?
Motion to approve.
And Mr. Rollins has the motion to approve, and I saw again the second from Mr. Teasman first. Any other discussion or questions?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teasman?
Yes.
Mr. Prager?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. Arseneff?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
So we, did we, or where are we at with the bonds that we sent out for?